Good afternoon. My name is Melissa Lee, Vice Chair of the DCHA Stabilization and Reform Board. I call this meeting to order. This is the regular monthly meeting of the District of Columbia Housing Authority being held today, April ninth, two thousand twenty-five. This meeting is being held via Zoom video conferencing, and the board is here in person. The time is one oh two P M. I would now like to ask for a moment of silence and reflections. Okay, today's agenda is our regular agenda. We have invited members of the public to speak up via our website, or those who would just like to view the meeting can do so live via the DCHA website linked to Facebook Live. The Board of Commissioners welcome constituent input on matters of public concern and offers you today an opportunity to express your views during the public testimony portion of every meeting. However, we require that members of the public who attend our meetings abide by certain rules of decorum to allow the board to complete the business before it. For this virtual meeting, DCHA asks that you remain muted until you are instructed to speak. Members of the public cannot engage in any disruptive conduct or loud threatening or abusive language during board meetings. This includes loud outbursts or shouting during times when you have not been invited to speak. Anyone who violates these rules will be removed from the virtual meeting immediately. Serious or repeated violations of the rules may result in you being barred from speaking at future board meetings. We appreciate your interest in the matters before us today, and thank you in advance for abiding by the rules of conduct. At this time, I would like to ask for a roll call to determine the law.
Sure. Denise Blackson.
Present.
Thank you. Rhonda Burbidge. Lee Roy Clay.
Present.
Thank you. Jim Dickerson.
Present.
Ronnie. I got you, Commissioner Dickerson.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Ronnie Harris. Katrina Jones. Chris Murphy.
Present.
Jennifer Reed.
Present.
Thank you. Raymond Skinner. Teresa Silla.
Present.
Thank you, and Melissa Lee, present, you have a call.
Okay. I would like the Commissioners to consider to consider the meeting minutes of the March twelfth, two thousand twenty-five board meeting. Are there any comments or changes?
Nope.
A motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The minutes are approved. And next we'll turn to our Executive Director. Pete Pettigrew for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. I want to start off with several new hires, as I indicated at the last board meeting. Haven't had a full year to review and observe and watch and allow staff to sort of work through whatever issues they've had in various departments as we put together a recovery plan. At some point, you know, you start to identify areas that you think you may pivot in in order to be able to try to take the operation to another level. Now, obviously, we also have people that have left, and so we need to fill vacancies. So I'm excited to say that we have four new hires that we're extremely excited about. Everybody started except for Ms. Potter, but she starts officially on Monday, but she's in the meeting virtually right now. And so Carolyn Potter is going to be our new CVP for property management. She's been here before, so she knows the layout of the land. So she comes from HUD, and so we're excited to have her back. I met her years ago. I'm not going to say how long, Carolyn, because I don't want anybody to know how old I am. But also, we have Ms. Christopher Williamson, who's our new HR Director. Kimberly Graham left several months ago, and we had an interim, but then we did a search, and we're fortunate enough to have Ms. Williams, so she's been here at least now and getting her getting her stride on, which she decided to come on. Okay. I told her earlier, okay. Also, we have Dominique Dunn, who is a VP in property management. We had a property management vacancy we needed to fill there as we start to now focus in on restructuring the organization. We wanted to make sure that we get critical positions filled. And we also have Faith Rogers to my right. Faith is going to be a senior advisor. I was fortunate enough to convince her to leave HUD to come join the team. So she's here now. She's coming back, so obviously she must like the place. So those are the four new hires that we have. We're looking, we're excited about, you know, once the way you've ventilated organizations, right? And you have to bring in new people and with new insights and then new passions. So we're excited about the four additions. Number one, we'll probably look at and make some other changes as we go forward, or keep the enterprise, or whatever changes we make. But we're looking to continue to build capacity in-house and then take the agency progressively forward as we go forward. So welcome, guys. You're committed now, public, so get ready. Couple of highlights in Operation Wild, obviously utilization is always front and center for us on both sides of the House. We're eighty-four, almost eighty-four and a half percent in public housing. And on the voucher side, we're ninety-one percent on the federal side and eighty-four to local stuff. As you all know, I think I mentioned, Nicole and I now have bi-weekly meetings with the interim director, DHS, to talk about any challenges we're having on the local side, so we can improve that process and operation to increase voucher utilization much faster. And I know that's been an issue for several individuals. I know Commissioner Seeler, you brought it up before, and Commissioner Murphy, you mentioned it when, I forgot the woman's name, it's McShane.
Kelly McShane.
Yeah. So anyway, just so you know, we met with Ms. McShane and Mr. Wasnick, as well as several other advocates to talk about ways that we can all work together and partner to sort of streamline that process and improvement. So just so you know, we are having that dialogue. Hopefully, we'll have our first full meeting sometime next week or the week after to talk about what the process is. We've also had someone who's going to help us facilitate the process in general. So I believe we're in a good space now from a partnership standpoint, identifying a problem and working together to solve the problem, just so you all know.
I really appreciate you. I was going to ask, so I really appreciate you proactively sharing, and that there's really good news to share, so thank you.
We met with several. We met with, what was it? What was the other house? Woodley House, and we also met with Sunny Desai, who runs the Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I heard them loud and clear, and the goal is to reach out and partner with them so we can all work together to improve the services that we provide for people. So just so you know. We met with the Greenleaf residents, as well as the resident leaders over the last couple of weeks to talk about the modified revitalization plan. Well-attended, I tell you, which was exciting, because as I've told the residents, as I've done in the past, whether they've been in New Orleans, Alexandria, into this type of situation where you're looking at redevelopment, the residents are extremely important in terms of being there and being active and their voice being heard. You know, I try to tell residents all the time, if you don't show up and let your voice be heard, other people will speak for you. I can only speak so much as Executive Director, but when they see a room full of residents, they're saying they want what they want. That's a powerful message. So it appears that they're really committed to this. They're excited about where we're going. We've got to build first model laid out, which is what they wanted, which is what I told them I would try to revive them, and here we are. So we're excited about the progress we're going to make, going to be meeting with them at least once a month to talk about where we are. We're excited about the plans, and they will talk a little bit more about the resolution later on in the meeting. One thing that we don't highlight enough is the homeownership folks, the people that become homeowners for the first time. It's an important thing that I think we sort of take for granted here at DCH. So from now on, I'm going to, when we have, I'm going to note the fact that we had two homeownership signings that I signed off on. And for the year, the baby, we have four. So I'm just going to report those as they come up, because I think those are extremely important to note for the record that people are becoming homeowners out of the program.
Director, this is Jim Dickerson.
Yes.
Is this the, is the home, what are they buying? Are they buying units that they had moved into and have been in for a while, or new units that you have for sale that we have, or other group, other realtors, nonprofits, or others have for them?
Final, Commissioner, I don't know that answer off the top of my head, but I'll find out for you.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll check too, because I got the numbers from last year. We did nine last year, so I asked about last year's numbers for two thousand twenty-four, so I'll get to the full list.
That's great. Thank you.
Also, we have last year, we started this rebuilding communities initiative that I was extremely happy to get off the ground, because as again, when we first got here and I walked these properties, I realized there was no sense of community. And I know COVID had a lot to do with that as well. And those events, I thought were really well for us people together for the first time and getting people out, connecting with services, having people see each other. And also, they're now reaching surrounding neighborhoods, right? So that they can sort of understand that, you know, we're here to be good neighbors as well, right? So the next summer series is going to start on March twenty-fourth. I mean, May twenty-fourth, I'm sorry. So we'll be setting out a schedule, but you know, I'm going to set out everybody. I know Commissioner Seeler's been to a couple of them. And so they're really good time, good to connect with residents. So we're going to send it out to everyone, so you guys can have your schedule, and hopefully you guys can make some of the events. Some of the council members came out, the mayor came out to several events as well. So it's a really great time, and we just finished our senior series of all the senior properties for the winter, because they tend to be shut in, and we give them a little reason. We did events, chat choose, and we were servicing to them as well, like the one in Fort Lincoln, the ice cream store. So you see, so. And with that, I'll take any questions that you guys may have of other stuff, but I don't want to take too much time.
I wanted to acknowledge the back of the board book. I am especially grateful for the additional details around the the HCBP program, both the local rent supplement program and the federal vouchers. I really appreciate seeing the details for the number of applications that are in your shop and that are being reviewed on a week-to-week basis. Like, really appreciating the level of transparency and the level of detail that we are finally seeing reflected back to us about the process. And I want to, maybe this is like foreshadowing a little bit, but this is also the same level of diligence that I am seeing in the board book for our committee on operations and administration. So I am very pleased, like, this is wonderful. This is like, this is the information that we need to figure out how it is we're going to make changes and improve the voucher process for our folks. I also really appreciate that you understand resident engagement so well, and that this is such a big part of your updates to us. I think as we are working to untangle the LRSP, especially with the service providers that are engaging you, something that the ICH brings to the table and that I want to make sure is included in this facilitation process are people with lived experience that actually have been through the process, both historically and as well as currently. These are fellow ICH board members. And so I would very much appreciate being kept in the loop and having the opportunity to include all of those stakeholders, as well as you are working with the service providers, the advocates. We want to make sure you're also working with and getting feedback directly from people with lived experience who are navigating the DC Housing Authority process right now. Okay, so let's partner on that. Let's make sure the ICH is represented, that our folks with lived experience are at the table and participating in this facilitated process. Perfect. Thank you.
Can I echo the appreciation for the data? I really feel like over the last year, you guys have stepped up your game and like
Finally figured it out.
Yeah. It took you long enough. No, 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 I really do, I really do appreciate it. And I also just want to, there were a couple, one of the benefits of transparency is I think it surfaces sometimes really good news that we don't like acknowledge enough. And I was, I wanted to sort of just say something that really caught my eye is that for the public housing waitlist, that we're now down to seven hundred and eighty applicants that haven't, are that are awaiting an eligibility determination. That was how many, you know, over ten thousand? Eighteen thousand a couple of years ago. So I mean, that's just like, just to take a moment, let that wash over you for a second.
Wait, wait a second. Let's take, let's take, let's take a step back. Which waiting list are you talking about?
This is the folks that have not had their eligibility determined. They weren't even, so we're down to fewer than a thousand people who waiting to have their eligibility determined that will allow them to move forward. So I mean, yes, we're not, I'm not declaring victory by any means, but, but I think that's a pretty big thing that we should, we should acknowledge. I did have a question about the public housing, and it's, it's a, it's a, I'm not meaning to suggest that there's an easy answer, but I'm just curious to know if you have any thoughts or any plans. But the, the number of leased units, it's just, it continues to tick up at a pace that I know no one is satisfied with. And I think, I think we went up eleven from, from March to April. And it's, you know, I think it hurts our hearts a little bit when you look at like nine hundred and eighty-three vacant units, and we're only ticking up by eleven. I know that part of that is because as many as we fill, some people move out, and that sort of makes our, brings our net number down. But I guess what I was reflecting on, if we are, if we keep moving at that pace, it's going to take us like, I think I did the math, it's like over seven years to sort of get to all the vacant units. And I know that's even a crude measure, because things change between now and then. So I don't, I'm not saying that's real math. I'm just saying, it makes the point that, that eleven a month doesn't get us to where we need to go. So it's just kind of a long wind-up to saying, do you, are there thoughts on how we can accelerate it and continue to accelerate it so that we can get to the number that
So, yes.
We have thought about it.
Yeah, I'm sure.
We definitely, so we know we have a lot of vacant units, and we know some of them are going to take longer to, first of all, get repaired. So as we forecast, you know, we're forecasting fifty to seventy units, you know, coming online each month. And then, as you said, you know, we have people moving out. But what we're looking at is once we get to open the waitlist and go to a site base, we feel that's going to solve a lot of the problems. Right now, we're, you know, we meet with the same weekly. We're looking at units, we're offering them, we're offering them, and some people just, yeah, we don't have any takers. So we're down to that last seven hundred and eighty or something, which you said the other day, for eligibility purposes. You know, they were deemed eligible at one time, the paperwork has now expired, so we deem eligible, and we'll go back to those folks again. And as you all know, before we came, we, you know, we've been given more than the two or three offers of units. But once we open that up, which is going to be coming soon, that will solve that problem.
I think one other area of collaboration that's possible around here in this, in this area, especially with unit vacancies, is on the homeless services side, we have a very robust system for showing housing options that are available to people that are experiencing homelessness or are at risk of homelessness. And so I would very much love for our, for your representatives to come be presenting at our meetings so that all of our case managers on homeless services understand what the options are. And as sites become available, are making sure our, our population is looking at those opportunities and really taking advantage of this opening. Because when I hear fifty to sixty units are coming online on a monthly basis, we're talking about over the course of a year, eight thousand individuals experiencing homelessness, two thousand families. You know, like, there's a real opportunity here to make a difference for people that are experiencing homelessness. So I, this is an area where there's a real opportunity for us to create a highway for the people that need housing, so.
And I know, I think we asked about this before. I know there was this issue of offering, giving people two or three bites of the apple, which just slows the process down, which is really unfortunate for the people who are farther back in line. Has there been some thought to changing that at all?
Yeah. So what we do now, we do two written and two calls.
Okay.
That's it, you know, two written, two calls, and there you go. I've been active, I'm responding, and we move on.
We have a proactive process on our end, for example, where people have to confirm that they are interested in the units that are available and things of that nature as well. So I will also look to our coordinated assessment and housing placement process, especially for psych-based units. And I'll forward that information to you, just in case that model and the way that we work, you find that helpful, then there's a potential for partnership there so that we can help ensure, like, the availability of units is something that's well-known and that we are finding people that are committed to and really want those units. Yeah.
Well, thank you again, and hopefully we'll, the net number will start picking up.
Thank you. I think we've made so much progress in so many other areas that, like, I'm very excited about.
I mean, we had huge progress in that area, so knowing that we came in, that we had cleaned up, and the vacancy has, you know, definite, I mean, the occupancy has definitely increased. You know, we're definitely proud of the team, and just as we know, dealing with, you know, older waitlists and stuff like that, that's the issue. But also, planning to open a waitlist is huge also, so we want to execute it and make sure we do that correctly.
And the site base makes all the sense in the world, because then you know that you have a set number of people that are identifying this specific property. Because we have properties no one wants to touch. I mean, I'm not going to say them aloud, but there's several properties, people are just like, no, we got units there, and they're like, no way.
And I'm talking about even getting down to the unit and getting people that are committed to the
And that's what we do now. Yeah, we get down to the unit, we try to commit it, but so, we're definitely talking, if you send that, that would be great. Let's do it.
Thank you.
Commissioners Blackson, Harris, Reed, Dickinson, any comments or questions for Executive Director Pettigrew?
No, not at this time.
To the public testimony. The prominent period permits residents, housing choice voucher participants, and public witnesses who have signed up to present to the board for three minutes. If you have both general comments and comments on the resolution, you will have three minutes to complete your full testimony. Then we will move to the non-resident public testimony. So our resident, first resident, we have Sandra Banks. And on the Zoom platform, you should receive a link to be promoted, so you should accept. And if you're having issues with speaking, it is star six to unmute yourself. Sandra Banks. Want to move forward. Next, we have Lakeisha Shangler. Hopefully, I'm saying that correctly. Lakeisha Shangler. Forward. Next, we have Paulette Matthews. Paulette Matthews, and I'm pausing just to give everyone an opportunity to hear their name called. Moving forward, next I have former Commissioner Kenneth Council.
Good morning, everyone, or good afternoon, everyone. On, on March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, the OIG did a report on ninety million dollars. And I'm, I'm appalled to see that they're still trying to make sense with it, where they're trying to find out what has happened to it or how you all used it. I'm hoping it it will happen where you all can find what happened, what's wrong, where the money is going. What bothers me, what bothers me the most is last week, there was a report given by the attorney, Amy Glassman, where she said that the waiting list is down to two thousand. That's thirty-eight thousand. It was forty thousand. So where did the thirty-eight thousand go? Just like you all have more than one waiting list, two thousand is nowhere. There's no way in the world that you've made it come down like that, and for you all to say numbers or allow something like that to be printed or even said, that's just not true. That's not fair to the residents or the agency. And the A card. There's meat and potatoes that we'll get to on this coming Monday, but there's some issues that we've seen already in the committee that I sit on, that we're seeing that's just unjust. So I'm hoping that you all will be ready on Monday for us to go tooth and nail and commissioners. I'm hoping that you all will go through the two hundred and seventy pages and not just take whoever is leading this and trust that what they're doing is fair, because the mistakes that we're finding in this A card, it's unbelievable. Last but not least, factual, coming, leaving my house this morning. They're laying sod, not where they're laying mulch in my neighborhood. And I don't know if it's done by day labor or who that contractor is, but with my own eyes, a gentleman walking down the street asked, how could he do this? He was brought across the street, he signed a clipboard and was given a vest and was on payroll that quick. So is that day labor that we're doing now? I don't know if procurement knows or whatever departments that should look into this. Doesn't look right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Margaret Morton. Margaret Morton. And if you're having difficulty speaking, it's star six to unmute yourself. I see you promoted you, Ms. Morton. Ms. Morton, I'm going to have someone call you. But I will come back to you. I see your hand is raised. Next, we have, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead and speak, Ms. Morton.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Margaret Morton. I'm supposed to be a returning resident of Brad. Over me a unit, but it was tax credit unit, but it wasn't sufficient. I had applied for a two-bedroom. Also, I have an ongoing issue, because my rent statement indicate that I owe housing seven thousand dollars, and it's incorrect. I only owe my rent for this month. I went into the rent office back in November, when I first realized that the money that came from ERAP, it never was applied to me. I was waiting for to get money from ERAP, but it was taking so long to come. I went another route to go in there and rectify my rent, and I gave them forty-six hundred back in July, I mean, June twenty-eighth, June twenty-eighth. ERAP came through September the nineteenth, and it seemed like the money disappeared. I also made arrangement to pay what was left after I gave them the forty-six hundred, which I made three payments of five hundred and seventy-six dollars. So the total amount they said was nine thousand. I gave them forty-six hundred, and I made three additional payments. So when ERAP money came in, which was eight thousand five hundred, they took the whole thing. They took the entire thing. I should have had credit, I should have had credit on the books to at least carry me three months. They took the whole thing. In fact, they sent me a statement in November saying that I owe them five hundred dollars. Mind you, my rent is sixteen hundred and forty dollars a month. So my statement for November said, just give us five hundred. But what was all the money from ERAP, well, it disappeared.
So Ms. Morton, this is Nicole Wickliffe. I can give you a call back. I reviewed your account, and the ERAP actually was applied, so I can give you a call. And if you haven't gotten
Um, if you haven't gotten a copy of your statement, I'm sure that the manager gives you a, a copy, a printout.
Well, nothing, nothing is as it should be. And this has been ongoing for me since November. I, I went to the rent office and reported it. This stuff not being, being accurate. But you gotta worry about this stuff and keep worrying about it and worried about it. And nobody's fixing anything. I don't have, have the additional money to give housing. And I certainly don't want to be overcharged. I'm struggling as it is. My rent just went up to sixteen forty without much notice. They tackled seven hundred dollars at one time onto my rent. And I'm just trying to get adjusted to paying that amount. And I don't mean to talk so loud, but I have a cold. I'm counting my little breathe, my breathing is off. I have a cold. But I just want some help. And I want housing to do right, because they expect us to do right. And they, they're just not doing right, you know? And as far as me returning, it's, it's no answer to that. Okay, I don't qualify, but they knew before that they were going to go that route and take these tax, get these tax credit places built. They knew this before. And they let me sit and wait and follow this process all the way till it's time to move to inform me that they've taxed credit places. And it's just not fair. And it's just not right how they treat people.
And Ms. Morton, I'll reach out to you personally.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Yolanda Thornton. Yolanda Thornton. I think my registration is Miss Yolanda Thornton.
Good afternoon, everyone. Can y'all hear me?
We can. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Yes, good afternoon. Um, my name is Yolanda Thornton, and I am a public housing resident. I have resided on, um, one of the largest, uh, public housing, uh, locations in Washington DC for some time now. Um, I have three children uh, that live in the home with me. Um, we've had to deal with, with some hazards unbeknownst to me, uh, over some time. And, um, housing has, you know, tried to, uh, bait the problems, but, you know, we still had to deal with those problems over time where I've had to constantly run back and forth to the doctors with my kids, trying to figure out why they're sick. Um, you know? And to also have to deal with the pandemic, I got sick with COVID, uh, um, a few times, and one of my children was sick. But I homeschool my children. And the repairs that were done, I'm, I'm very grateful for it. But it's still, uh, a hazard, because the homes are so old as well as, um, like you say, modernization. We don't have a laundromat um, in our neighborhood. I live in a townhouse. Um, I have three children who I homeschool. And I, I should be of, of it should be available that we should have access, or at least have this sufficient amenities to be able to do our day-to-day such as washing clothes and things of that sort. Yes, we have the hookup for, for a washing machine. But what about a dryer? We have a clothesline, but in proximity to the clothesline, it is the recycling bins and the trash cans. And, and you know, the, the rodents and all that stuff in, in the alleyway. Um, you know, public safety wise, I know we have the police station here, but still, there are some issues. And, you know, like, I, I look forward to the next step as, uh, becoming a homeowner, I'm making all the necessary steps to do that. But there's no, uh, communication as far as who's your case manager? Um, how to get to those next steps? They say family self-sufficiency, but nobody's working with me or my family to make those, those steps. I'm running and doing all the research to try to get to those next steps. But if I have sick children, how can I be sufficient to, to, to maintain and keep a job? Because of the environment.
Sorry, Ms. Morton. That, that's just to let you know that your time has expired.
Uh, I want to say, this is Reverend Jim Dickerson. Uh, I, I'm sorry I didn't get your, uh, last name, ma'am. Uh, but I wanted to tell you that, uh, the organization I started and I'm still on the board, Mana Incorporated, is a homeownership organization in the district. And I'd be glad to, they'll be, we'll be glad to get the numbers for the counseling program, home buyers' clubs, uh, if you're interested. To you.
No problem.
Thank you. Next, we have Linda Brown. Linda Brown. Next, we have Donna Towns. Ms. Towns, I believe you received a request to be promoted. If you accept that and unmute yourself, we'll accept your testimony. And star six to unmute yourself. Moving forward, we're moving into the non-resident public comment section. First, we have Nathaniel Henry. Nathaniel Henry. Next, we have Matilda Turner. Matilda Turner, have you accepted your request for promotion? You can speak. Star, star six. And Ms. Towns, I see you raise your hand. I'll come back to you. Ms. Turner. Let me walk back to, uh, Donna Towns. So we can accept her testimony. Ms. Towns. Once again, star six to unmute yourself. Okay, Ms. Towns, I'll have someone contact you to see if we can help resolve some of the technology issues. Moving forward, I have next, uh, Daniel Del Pallego.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Just takes a minute to, to join the, the meeting. So, uh, thank you. My name is Daniel Del Pallego with Empower DC. Uh, first, I'd like to comment regarding the Greenleaf Resolution. I'd like to first ask why the Housing Authority is once again working with a developer who dropped out of the twenty-twenty-two plans, uh, to redevelop Greenleaf. This seems problematic and potentially disastrous if they decide to do the same thing again. Uh, secondly, it has been publicly stated that the Housing Authority will not move forward with development plans on properties where Section eighteen applications have been submitted to HUD until HUD approves them. Why this now? And how are Greenleaf residents going to be involved in what will happen on their property? And how will their rights be protected, especially as it appears relocation will be part of future redevelopment plans? We did, um, uh, we met recently and, uh, and spoke with some Greenleaf residents, um, and some residents in, in general uh, who were concerned about the developers, especially, uh, Penrose, who have not been ideal landlords at the haze, uh, have been, uh, problematic, it seems. So there's a lot of concern uh, when that name comes up related to redevelopment and potential management. On a separate note, I want to follow up on a point I brought up at last month's meeting. We have recently performed outreach at several properties. And as we spoke with tenants, a few questions came up. Um, we heard from several folks at Richardson dwellings that were being relocated to Kennelworth. While this is a good thing for those tenants, it raises the question, will they have the right of return to a redeveloped Richardson dwellings, which has been promised now for a while through the new communities initiative? If not, is this point being made clear to these folks who are anxious to leave a property with serious conditions, issues, and may not necessarily understand the rights that they are giving up by doing so? We spoke to several new people at several properties, including Richardson and Bedding Terrace. Uh, they are folks who have come into the public housing, uh, program from the waitlist. That's also a great thing. Um, however, um, it, it did make me wonder, and as we spoke to folks, they were not aware that, you know, redevelopments were planned for the properties, that Section eighteen applications had been filed for the properties. And a lot of these folks, you know, uh, want to be in the public housing program. That's why they are accepting these, uh, offers to, to properties. Um, but eventually, they could not be part of the public housing program because of the redevelopment activities that are happening on their property. So I wanted to flag that concern. Um, and if they're, you know, just urging the Housing Authority to be as clear as possible with folks about what they're getting into when they accept units in properties that have some sort of, um, redevelopment activity planned for it. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to go back. Um, I understand we have Paulette Matthews. And I want to give her an opportunity to speak her testimony today. Paulette Matthews, we're going to send you a request for promotion. If you can star six to unmute.
Hello, everybody. How y'all doing? Uh, my name is Paulette Matthews, and I was a former resident of Berry Farms. I now live in Kalamilla. Um, I've heard a little bit of the people's testimony and, um, you know, that is just the story that we have been going through. But at the same time, nothing is constant but change. And a lot of changes need to be made. But, um, for a long period of time, we've been going through it. So therefore, the process is going to be a little harder doing it. But I do see some changes. The reason why I wanted to be on this call today, even though I'm having phone issues, is the fact that I want to talk about the return as well for Berry Farms residents and what that looks like. Um, because when we were having those meetings, uh, often we'd talk about the seniors. And yes, it was good that they put up a senior building. But when you think about the fact of how they came through and bode those, all of those buildings twenty to thirty at a time, and then to sit there and put one building up, knowing that everybody's not seniors, knowing that all the seniors are not going to want to come to a senior building, maybe because they have household members who are caretakers or whatever, so they need maybe more two, three bedrooms. Maybe they have grandkids. So, you know, some of these things may or may not have been considered, but I don't think that they have been. And so a lot of people have died before even coming back and what that looks like. And for me, leaving from a townhome to have to sit and figure out when are they going to eventually put one up, is like a mystery to me. I could be dead before that time comes. So where I am, I try to make the best of it. I have a concern about the, um, the cameras. And who actually monitors these cameras? Um, how often are they monitored? Uh, we have brighter lights than we usually have that have been installed. And we have the DC Housing Authority police who's always saying that they're short staffed. That's been a song I've heard since being in housing. But yet you see them. A lot of times when I see them, I see them harassing people who live in their neighborhood. And some of these laws that they make, make it kind of hard for you to even live in your neighborhood. Because if two or three are together praying, it's fine. But if two or three or four are more together in their neighborhood, just being in their neighborhood, then, um, the police, then whether they be the jump outs, whether it be DC Housing Authority or whatever, and because of certain laws that are being enforced, like if they even try to walk away, not even doing nothing wrong, was just kicking it with their friends, excuse me, where you going? And all that. And then conversations turn into a whole lot of stuff that's really unnecessary. And you're living right there in your neighborhood. Uh, but yet you can see them in different locations for hours at a time. I don't know if they looking at something on a monitor, whether they just sitting there kicking it, but, uh, or just relaxing on the clock. But same time, whole time, when things get done in the neighborhood, even with gun shoot, shooting that goes on, like we living in the wild, wild west, they can be somewhere, but they not where they supposed to be when they need to be, but they're forever there harassing. When you, um, call, because I've had incidents personally, I'm not just talking to be talking, um, and you call to find out, can you check these cameras and see what, whatever, you can't get no results. You can't get no results, dead or alive, whether somebody took your package or whatever the case may be. And so I'm not understanding the cameras, that part. The other part is that they have these towers that's on top of these houses, whereas though it's supposed to let you know which area these gunshots are coming from in the wild, wild west, in which we live in nationwide nowadays. But that don't seem to work for me either. Because the sad part of it all is they all appear.
Ms. Matthews.
Can y'all hear me? Because I was cut off maybe because of the time.
We can hear you. Ms. Matthews, are you with us?
Hello?
Can hear you. We're sorry about that.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm having phone issues. That was explained in the beginning. So I'm trying to hurry up and rush this thing because of the time factor. Um, and so what, what's the point? If you got cameras, you don't have nobody monitoring these cameras. Because a lot of times when this gunplay goes off, if y'all monitoring the cameras, y'all don't have to come in there with sire, sirens blazing. But you can trap off all those running spots. Like where I live at, it's only, uh, two streets and an alley. And, and you've got points where you can go to, where you could have DCHA and MPD combined together. Because somehow, to me, they seem like they separate. You can't even call MPD when DCHA tell you to call MPD. Because when they call, if you don't know who took your package, and you can't get that information from the people who's supposed to be monitoring these cameras, then where are you? Looking like a fool in a sense. So I'm trying to figure out what's the purpose of all of this. Because for me, the bright lights don't do nothing, but not let my solar lights come on, and I gotta cover them up. Because when it comes to property being taken off your porch, to people getting killed, to people out here shooting guns, everybody always at the last minute. And then the crazy part is sometime DCHA ain't even in the midst of it, but MPD is their full force. But same time, whole time, you could see the harassment. But again, I'mma repeat it again. When it comes to the personal welfare and safety of us, that's another thing. Then we got doors that's supposed to be secure. Yeah, people probably break up. Put, put blocks in it. No shoes. Let me have this time, please. Because it's public safety, please. So they need to get out of their cars and walk in these apartment complexes, still going in buildings that don't have nobody in them.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Next, we're going to go back to, um, William, our non-resident testimony. I have William Jordan. Mr. Jordan, we're sending you a request for promotion. And I want to give you time to speak. Star six to unmute yourself.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
All right. My testimony is focused on Resolution 2510. I sent the board my testimony in advance, so I won't read the whole thing. Dig it out your delete box and please take a look at it. So my first concern, of course, is EYA, which seems to be a team member. Sent you a link to testimony by Ask, Ask, Ask the car, who's one of the principals. And my concern is we're partnering with a developer who just finished testifying that he doesn't believe in regulations and following regulations. And in his testimony before the council said, we need to waive affordable housing requirements, zoning process, we need to get rid of TOPA, Mavis Bacon, and a whole list of things that in order for him to get the job done, he needs no regulation. So that seems to me to be a problem to have a developer who's in public said they don't want to deal with regulations, yet you all pick him to do that. And of course, if you read, I talk about the $1.7 million townhomes they developed at McMillan. So we have a problem, right? You all are picking developers. They say they can't get the job done. You're going to work with them anyway, and then they tell you in order to get the job done, they have to ignore the residents. The fact, if you listen to that testimony, they said people are the problem. They just want to build units, and the people are the problem. So my suggestion is you get rid of them. But short of that, there are two things I think you must do. And that is to affirm in this resolution the rights and the position of Greenleaf residents and those resident councils. Let's build up those resident councils. I think the Resident Management Corporation is the best way to go about it, because then, and to give them at least a 10% ownership stake in this development. The reason for the Resident Management Corporation is so they can come together. And ownership is because that's the only way their voice really counts. I mean, you can't depend on the sympathy from the agency. We got a dynamic and great new director, but this board is just ordering the director to fix an agency that even if it's fixed, is inadequate to deal with what we need to move forward. And I think the movement of the Trump administration makes clear that even if you had an efficiency, efficiently running DCHA today, that that entity is not capable of serving the development requirements and the needs of residents. And then finally, I just wanted to say, if this board is serious about getting these things done, then, you know, Ms. Hi, Park Morton, and my phone should be ringing, because we know how this beast really works down at the resident level. We've offered solutions. We've been back and forth working with this agency, and we know. And it tells me that when we're left out the process, you can't be serious. And I just have to say that. And so that's it. But EYA has to go. I mean, if you all move forward with EYA and don't put some things in this resolution to affirm the power of residents, you're not serious about success, because they are not a successful organization. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. That can sort of sound kind of familiar, my share. Thank you. Okay, next we'll have committee reports, and I think we can start with Commissioner Reed. Audit in Finance.
Sure. Good afternoon, everyone. Just a quick update from our committee. We don't have any resolutions coming before the board today. We did speak at our last meeting just about the results of the audit that I know we talked about as a board in prior meetings. We also discussed sort of the state of our financials, which we seem to be on track for the course of the fiscal year so far. And we talked about the fact that we're going to be coming to the board later this summer with our proposed FY '26 budget. So we'll be working on developing, the staff will be working on developing that, presenting it to the committee. We will host an education symposium to discuss elements, and then we will also be likely voting on that in September. So that's something to keep an eye out for. And then, last but not least, we got an update from Patuna and her team from the Audit and Compliance Division just on how they're progressing with their work, and we look forward to meeting again next month.
Any questions?
Sure, for Capital Projects. We spent a fair amount of time talking about the Greenleaf property, which we'll talk about later when we get to resolutions. So I'll hold off on talking about that right now, but we did get a good update on it. We've been talking about that for the last several months, getting updates, regular updates on the team's progress. We also have worked with the staff team as they have been developing a plan to share with the board to propose a more comprehensive update on what our plan is for revitalizing a series of properties, which we know need quite a bit of renovation, as long with a financing mechanism that they'll be proposing as well. So we've sort of been working towards this plan for some time, and the staff has done a really good job of running the numbers and figuring out what we can afford and what the tools available are to refinance, to finance some of that redevelopments and renovations that we know we need. And then finally, we also got an update on the JOC resolution that will be, I think, also talked about today that was discussed in the Operations and Administration Committee. So we'll look forward to talking about the resolution about Greenleaf when we get to the resolution section of the agenda.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Blackson, would you like to give a resident committee update?
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I wanted to talk a little bit about ACOG Plan. You know, we had the pleasure of having Amy attend the Resident Services Committee, and we invited community leaders, you know, which are residents, what it's all about, to this actual Resident Service Committee meeting. And Amy shared a little bit about the ACOG Plan, and resident leaders were able to ask some questions about it. And we're going to have further questions, presentation on the next Block by Block, which will take place on Thursday, April the 17th, where we can get a more updated version and spend more time learning about the ACOG Plan and have more time to go over it. But for the record, I just want to state that residents do not believe that it's enough time to view the actual ACOG Plan. And it's a 225-page document, and we need, you know, more time to be able to review the policy, get an understanding, and try to give feedback. These are things that have been stated when in my prior term as a commissioner and as a resident leader. So I just wanted to share that. And also note that the Resident Service Committee is focused on education and networking with resident leaders and DCHA. We work hand in hand with the Office of Resident Services, who shared during this committee meeting, some of the great things that they're doing about, doing at DCHA Office of Resident Services. I heard some residents share that they didn't know about certain programs and things like that, which we can get them connected. I know I can. If you give me a call at 202-250-4451, I can connect you with the Office of Resident Services. But the Committee on Resident Services is really focused on educating leaders and them being able to take that information back to their community. We've had a lot of great presenters on this initiative, the Block by Block. Former Councilman Kenneth Council, he attends these sessions, and many of the other leaders. So I just wanted to share and give Commissioner Silla a ten that we had the pleasure of having her at the last meeting. And if you would like to say anything, feel free.
Thank you, Commissioner Blackson. I really enjoyed hearing directly from the representatives of resident councils and understanding their concerns. It was a very robust discussion. I definitely feel for Amy and her team. It is not fun to, you know, work through such an extensive document and in the ways that it is written. I definitely appreciate the challenge from both sides. And so I look forward to a productive engagement where we can think through how to make the process more accessible to residents. Thank you so much for inviting me, Commissioner Blackson. I really enjoyed it.
Thank you, Commissioner Silla. You are quite welcome. And for residents that don't know, the ACOG Plan is the Emission and Continue Occupancy Plan. I always have trouble saying that word, so I try not to say it out. But that is the name of the plan, which governs DCHA and how we live as residents. So just want you to know that. And again, I am Commissioner Denise Blackson. Feel free to reach out to me if you need me. And thanks again.
Any questions for Commissioner Blackson? Commissioner Silla, would you like to give an operations update in the absence of Commissioner Jones?
Sure, absolutely. We reviewed two resolutions that are on the agenda, as that will set to in a little bit. So I will save the summary of the discussion on those two areas. Otherwise, the board book, the presentation from the DC Housing Authority team was very robust. We actually went over by 30 minutes. I think it was like almost a two, two and a half hour committee meeting. So thank you all for your patience and for working with us. This was wonderful. We started at the back of the board book, because the last few times we attempted, we never got to the end. And so we started with procurements and contracts and just seeing the dashboard, the list of procurements and engagements that are already underway, getting a sense of what's going to be coming to the board, really appreciate the level of transparency that's coming forward in the board book. We didn't spend a lot of time on the voucher program, only because Director Pedigree reassured us that he was reaching out to all of the individuals that had testified or had provided testimony at both the Performance Oversight Hearing and also at the last two board meetings that we have held. I did share a little bit more about the ask that has been surfacing since the Performance Oversight Hearing. Director Pedigree reflected back that she definitely heard the message. And so I believe we're on our way to facilitate engagement, and I'm very happy to hear that report out today. So thank you, Director Shaw and Executive Director Pedigree for keeping us moving on that front. I think the other area where there were a lot of questions and discussion was around public safety and the cameras. So there was some discussion about a site visit at one particular location where we've noticed a lot of cameras and just we've walked, we walked through it in quite a detailed fashion. The other place of concern, of course, is human resources and staffing. So very grateful to the director for the recent accomplishments on staffing and the new senior level team members that are joining us at the table. So very, very excited and very robust committee meeting and discussion. Thank you so much to the team that is, you know, pulling all this data together and presenting it in a way that makes it very engaging, very easy for us to really spotlight the issue areas and make sure that we are solving for the challenges ahead of us. It was a wonderful meeting. Congratulations, Director.
This month.
Yes, this month. Take it. Take it. Well, you got it. Yes. Thank you. Any questions for Commissioner Silla?
We will move on to resolutions. Our first resolution, 25-08, to authorize the execution of multiple job order contracting, JOC contracts.
Thank you, everyone. Jean Somerville, Senior VP of Procurement and Contracting, Department of Office and Administrative Services. Today, we are presenting to you Resolution 2508 to authorize the execution of multiple job order contracting contracts. The purpose of the resolution is to authorize contract capacity by the exec director to enter into multiple contracts for repair, alteration, modernization, maintenance, rehabilitation, demolition, and construction of infrastructure buildings and structures by means of job order contracts. To give you a little background on this, the District of Columbia Housing Authority has implemented job order contracting programs since 1996 to efficiently manage and execute a variety of construction and maintenance projects across its properties. Since then, DCHA has competitively bid the JOC contracts every five years, and it is now time to re-up on those contracts. And then to just provide additional background on what job order contracting is and how it does, and some of the key points for the Housing Authority. It is a task order based and competitively bid best practices in regards to pricing. The work under JOC contracts is carried out at a preset unit prices, and these are established during the competitive bidding process. This helps control costs and allows for quicker procurement. It is also scope-driven. JOC contracts are highly adaptive and scope-driven, meaning that the scope of work can be based on the specific task orders issued, whether for maintenance, repair, or new construction. And lastly, rotational contractor selection based on performance metrics. DCHA is implementing a rotational contractor selection process with JOC based on performance metrics, which are developed by DCHA. This performance-based approach ensures that contractors who consistently meet or exceed expectations continue to be selected for future work, while those who do not perform up to the standard are rotated out of the pool. Those are just some of the highlights. And then I just wanted to also share with you that DCHA received 35 proposals. 11 proposals were determined non-responsive, non-responsible. They did not meet the technical requirements. And then we had three other proposals that went through for evaluation, but they were not chosen to receive contract award. That left us with the remaining of 21 contractors that are proposed for contract award. And then to provide background on that, our current JOC program has 13 contractors contracting with us. So we've been pre-stocked contract the pool by 62% with the new solicitation. And then to provide a little insight on how we solicited, we did a RFP, which is a request for proposal instead of an invitation for bid, so that it's solely not based on cost. So in this time around, we were able to put in criteria just to kind of make sure, ensure that we receive contractors based on not just price. And for any other specifics or questions, I'm going to also invite Jackie Zalbena to join me, so that if you have specific questions on the scope, she'll be able to answer those questions.
This is Jim Dickerson. Would you just say again what the job order contractor does or is? What is, I'm sure you have said it, but I need to hear it again.
No, sir. We do not mind. I will let Jackie explain that. She can go into more detail, kind of, because it's a construction contract. So she'll be able to provide you most of the insight that you're probably looking for.
So the JOC contracts are actually tailored to the capital repairs, so our high-level replacement, rehabilitation, and renovations that are needed on our sites in order to do the stabilization.
So if I'm, does it make sense to maybe report out on the committee conversation that took place and the kind of follow-up work that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So while we were extremely pleased that we got very robust responses, 35 is a lot. Increasing our contractor pool and ensuring that we have a competitive process is always a win. At first, we were very confused. We have had, you know, we are, we are doing a number of very large procurements very specifically for construction. So it got very confusing about what was for what and why we were doing this. So we asked a lot of questions and requested additional data by the Capital Projects Team. Very pleased that Jackie pulled together a very simple framework and synopsis of the different contracts, so that we are recognizing what the differences are and the purposes for each one of them. uh, framework and synopsis of the different contracts so that we are recognizing what the differences are and the purposes for each one of them. We had very specific questions around how Jackie would be managing uh, the budget for each of the opportunities and making sure that we are uh, distributing the opportunities in a manner that is fair and equitable between the contractors. Jackie responded by showing us the dashboards that they have built to monitor uh, uh, the, the jobs that are being assigned, the value of the assignments, the process of completion. Um, and so that was um, uh, a wonderful update to see turned around. I think it was within three business days. Um, and then we also had questions about the process and how uh, the process would be managed. So it was great to see uh, both the process described in detail as well as some of the key metrics that you will be using surfaced for our attention. So um, we had a lot of questions. There was a lot of discussion. There were areas that we indicated we were not satisfied with the answers in front of us. But thank you for the extensive follow-up to demonstrate like where you are now. And it was presented very well at the Capital Projects Meeting.
I have a question about the performance-based metrics. Every once in a while, sometimes in these meetings, we hear residents complain about different contractors um, for various reasons. Is that measured in some of those metrics in terms of who you get back to or who you hire and have come up with?
Yes. So we're actually evaluating for J O C. We're evaluating them in three phases. Um, it's the project development, so everything on how they actually scope and provide pricing and the way that they interact with our residents and with um, D C H A. Then they're also evaluated on the construction side. So not only how they're actually managing supervision um, onsite, their subcontractors as well, but the delivery of the quality of construction. And then um, Jean has rolled out the contractor performance overall via Canary, which is another software. And so property managers, um, regional foremans, we're gonna start including a P M O in those evaluations as well. And then um, we are, we, we are looking at using search staffing to bring on additional inspections and quality control. Right now, the project managers are doing that. And so we want to add more to our team members in order to continue to be able to inspect daily and onsite.
I appreciate that answer, but I do want to amplify that when residents are complaining, whether it's to our board or if they pick up the phone and call you, to make sure that that has a landing place in your framework so that it is directly informing.
Yes. I mean, best practices as far as construction is concerned, to always indicate incident reports and then the follow-up on it. And the director and deputy director have always been very clear about that.
Um, I just have a quick question about the section-three compliance for these contracts. I noted in the resolution that um, it says that all the firms have completed a section-three action plan. Can you describe sort of what, what types of things did they include in there? Are they jobs? Are they training? What is, what is um, being offered by the different firms?
That's a great question, Commissioner Reed. So they are offering a, a wide range of services. Some of the contractors are gonna do uh, training. Some of them are gonna do training and job opportunities. Uh, others will be um, filling in the gaps in between there. So what we are going to do is we, they, their plans were approved uh, per their proposal requirements. We've all, also been in contact, but we, my department has been in contact with Sirac Blackout, Section Three Coordinator. And she and I are um, kind of strategizing how we're going to roll out the actual compliance piece for the J O C contractors. So uh, preemptive of sending them out their notice of intent to award. We've already scheduled time to where we're gonna meet with them. At all of the uh, the contractors that will be awarded, we're gonna meet with them and go over their section-three action plan that they submitted with their proposal and then walk them through how they are going to actually be compliant. So we will be quantifying that in more specific ways in which they are going to meet those requirements in a meeting after they receive their notice of intent to award.
And to also add to that, more to the program uh, monitoring of it. Um, all projects are actually, um, they have to fill out a, a promise, but they're uh, planned a way of meeting the ten percent uh, section-three goal. And then they have to provide the actual, so we actually monitor on a project-by-project to ensure the compliance on their umbrella contract. Um, so.
And it'll be managed by, it is, it'll actually have visibility between C C D, which is Jackie's department, O A S, my department, and then section-three. The three of us will have a comprehensive plan that then goes between our three departments to make sure that they are complying with the plan that they propose as well as, you know, making sure that as, as their contract amounts changes, they're adhering and they're adjusting their plans accordingly.
Okay. Um, it would be helpful after you've been able to meet with and finalize the plans that we could get a summary of what the section-three compliance uh, will look like. And then um, for not this uh, board meeting, but I would be interested in a discussion with the board, maybe um, at a later date, just really about the section-three program, how it works, how you find people, um, how they get involved, and how we're tracking um, and making sure people are connected to opportunities. Maybe that could be in conjunction with Commissioner Blackson's um, committee.
Sounds good. We can do that. Um, I wanted to reflect on one of the public witness testimonies that we just heard. Um, Mr. Council flagged to us that um, and, and he expressed it as a complaint, right? Are, is, is someone hiring for day-to-day jobs on, when they're um, implementing um, contract work? And I think he, he was talking about either landscaping, um, if I'm recalling that detail quickly. Um, I think he shared that as a negative story. I did not see that as a negative story. I recognize people sometimes don't want full-time work. They actually prefer day-to-day labor. And if on that moment, um, there was a synergy between what somebody was looking for and uh, an opportunity to bring that person on board and, and have them employed in that way. Um, you know, I, I, but I definitely want us to think about and to be responding to the scenario that he indicated as well as um, understanding the interest of uh, residents, whether they are looking for that part-time immediate day labor engagement that Mr. uh, Council highlighted to us as something that he saw. Um, so I definitely want to understand whether that's a part of the section-three framework, whether that's something that we can facilitate and support, if that's truly the interest of residents um, as well as ensuring that we have um, career opportunities, full-time job opportunities that are emerging from these contracts. So I just wanted to connect the dots between um, what Mr. Council raised up to our attention.
Any additional questions regarding Resolution twenty-five dash O eight? Oh, yeah. Yes, we want units fixed. Let's move this forward.
I will, I will second it.
Sure. Commissioner Ronnie Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Teresa Silla?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Jenny Reed?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Chris Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Jim Dickerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Denise Blackson?
Yes.
Chairman Raymond Skinner? And Vice Chair Melissa Lee?
Yes.
Resolutions approved.
Next Resolution twenty-five dash O nine to authorize the the Council of District of Columbia agreement to enter into long-term subsidy contract for this project awarded in F Y twenty-two and R F P in support of the creation of affordable housing in the District of Columbia.
Good afternoon, Cameron DeBrin. Uh, happy to be here with you. So this resolution, as uh, Vice Chair mentioned, is for authorization to submit. Uh, and this particular project is actually one that came to you in December. Uh, this is Harvard Courts. At the time that we submitted the resolution to in December, we had received a letter of commitment from the D H C D. So this is one of the projects that comes through the consolidated process. We get a letter of commitment from D H C D, and it's on that basis that we then proceed. And that resolution was approved. The amount, however, was changed since then because as uh, as, as Vice Chair said, this was an F Y twenty-two R F P. The original rents, the rent reasonableness that was done was a little bit older. And so what they realized is they needed to update it. And so that update has resulted in a higher uh, contract rent amount, and so that's why we're back. So our proposal is to replace Resolution twenty-four fifty-three that was passed in December with now Resolution twenty-five O nine. For Harvard Courts, this is the N H P Foundation. It's a hundred and eight-unit new construction. What they did was take, uh, it's a, right now, the, it's a surface parking lot that was part of the Columbia Heights Village uh, apartment complex, and it's gonna be a new construction building. It's still gonna be twenty-two units that are L R S P. It's just that the per-unit cost or the per-unit contract rents are, are, are updated to, as to why we're back today.
Questions?
There were not very many questions that were raised in committee discussion, as we've seen this before, by standard for D C Housing Authority.
And, and if I'm not mistaken, the D H C D does, they, they, really, they're the ones that, that sort of need, need to make sure that all the numbers work and, yeah.
Any of our commissioners who are remote, any questions regarding Resolution twenty-five dash O nine? Motion?
I move that we pass it.
That's second.
Sure. Commissioner Denise Blackson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Ronnie Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Jim Dickerson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Chris Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Jenny Reed?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Teresa Silla?
Yes.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Melissa Lee?
Yes.
The resolution's approved.
Next Resolution twenty-five dash ten uh, to authorize the revision to the revitalization plan for the Greenleaf Public Housing Community and negotiation of an amended master development agreement.
I can say a few words, and I'll turn it over to you, David. Um, so uh, we've been talking about Greenland for quite a while. Um, and you'll remember, you know, well over a year ago, um, we entertained a sort of a somewhat controversial decision to move forward with a renovation in place at the senior building at Greenleaf. And if you remember, we all struggled with a little bit because it seemed like seniors and renovation in place was a recipe for success. Um, one of the things I really appreciate about uh, our executive director is that he listens to folks and he listens to residents. And um, you know, even though at the time we thought it was the right thing to do to move forward with that plan, he, he came back to us and said, I think we should rethink this. And um, challenged the team to think about how we could restructure this, the, the original redevelopment plan to accommodate the, I think, reasonable concerns that the seniors uh, shared with us. Um, the team has spent a lot of time over the last year or so uh, talking to the, the, the developer that we have a master development agreement with. Um, and re- really kind of fundamentally rethinking how we could uh, rehabilitate this, this property in a different way that responded to the concerns that we got. And so that's what we've been talking about in committee for the last several months. Um, one of the main messages uh, from the, the commission, uh, commissioners on the committee uh, that we gave to the staff and they, you know, sort of got tired of hearing us say it was, we just need to make sure that if this is what we're gonna go forward with, this is what the residents want. And um, I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that the team approached that challenge uh, with. And uh, look forward to hearing an update, but the, from everything I'm hearing, uh, it was very well received. So um, I think David is gonna present to us the re- sort of the, a new vision for what that, uh, what this, this redevelopment could look like. Um, I'm hoping he's gonna share the good news that the residents support this new vision. And then um, we'll, we'll actually get to the business of approving what I ho- I hope will be approving a resolution um, that will approve that new vision and authorize the team to enter into negotiations with the developer uh, to, to amend the master development agreement. Um, I know that in some of our testimony, um, there were some, there were sort of some feedback provided. Um, and David, I'm wondering, and I'm, I'm guessing, knowing you, that maybe in the course of your presentation, you could sort of address some of the issues that were raised. Because I think, I think they're fair questions. I think also we have good answers to those questions. So um, David, let me turn it over to you.
Thank you, Commissioner, for the uh, preview. My name is David Cortiella. I uh, work with the real estate uh, development team to try to reposition our portfolio and rethink the approach that we're taking to the renovation and the redevelopment of all our properties. My voice is going, I'm sorry about that. Let's first start off with the nexus for why we did this. Uh, and Commissioner Murphy's absolutely correct. The residents were loud and clear with Executive Director Pedigree about not wanting a solution that was presented as the only solution at the time per the master development agreement that had been approved by the previous board, right? Twenty-twenty-two, or master development agree, uh, in twenty or so, a uh, a selection was made of a development team in twenty-twenty-two. A uh, a uh, redevelopment or revitalization plan was adopted. And shortly thereafter, a master development agreement was approved. And as some of the speakers mentioned, I mean, it wasn't the, it wasn't uh, what everybody had hoped for. Uh, it was a long elaborate process that the uh, that the Housing Authority went through at the time. It was really time-consuming. What we decided to do, based on the input from uh, residents about the renovation strategy, was let's ask our development partners, come back to the table. Let's take a look at two things that were not on the table at the time. One was very importantly, and the board took and approved the resolution about the repositioning of the operating subsidies. We said to our development partners, if we were to re-uh, position our operating subsidy, change it completely, then there may be a possibility for us to be able to, instead of doing a reba- a uh, renovation of the senior building, is knocking it down, starting over and building brand-new, which was what Commissioner Pedigree kept on hearing. Walking around Greenleaf. Second thing was that after the board took a resolution and approved the resolution saying, let's move forward with this repositioning operating subsidy. On June twenty-fourth, we submitted an application for Greenleaf. That's still pending, but we're hopeful. We're very, very hopeful uh, on that front. Uh, and we then this, when prior to submission of it, we took it back to the residents and the resident council. And we said, here is the approach, and here's what we're trying to achieve. So all of these things that were going on, all right, the rethinking of our portfolio, the repositioning of our properties, and Keith listed, or Commissioner Pedigree hearing it. Executive Director Pedigree uh, was hearing was the uh, were the complaints about the strategies. Our partners were very uh, much aware of the chatter that was going on, the complaints, the issues. They had, they were going forward with a plan that had been approved, and that was it. Uh, and, but they were willing to come to the table and have conversations with us. It took a while to be able to uh, get across our simple principles about if you reposition the operating subsidy, the potential for greater revenue is there, therefore, there was more uh, development activity that we do. And the second thing, and speaking to some of the, the uh, speakers uh, before the meeting that spoke to is that we told them that since the N D A was last approved, the revitalization plan was last approved, this board has taken uh, uh, action on three resolutions. One was the development principle, the principles for a developer, for a public developer. Those are, are development principles. The second one was embracing the repositioning. The third one was the handbook for tenant rights on the re- uh, development and repositioning. All right, three key documents that lay the foundation for the kind of master development agreement we need to uh, sign and how we will implement development program that's responsive to a number of things. What is, what are some of the key principles that we outline in the development principles? The resolution speaks to three very important ones. One, our core constituents are zero, thirty percent M I, A M I. That's our core constituency. We will do everything to make sure that very low-income people are our key focus of the redevelopment plans moving forward. The second is that residents are a part- The second is that residents are our partners. That community engagement is just, just showing up to meetings. This is where actual partners will sign a document with our resident councils and make a commitment that we will, both the residents and us, monitor and monitor our development partners to ensure that what we have included in our agreements are being implemented. And third, what we said was one-for-one replacement is the absolute beginning. I mean, we don't only want to have a one-for-one replacement, we want more affordable units on the property beyond the number of units that are currently in place. So, the, the resolution speaks to it. I think one of the last comments in the resolution, it says, whereas the redevelopment process of Greenleaf will follow the principles outlined in the, in the approved development principles and guidelines on operating subsidies in the tenant handbook. Absolutely fundamental that any developer moving forward understands that if they're going to sign an agreement with us, they have to adhere to the principles that are, uh, enumerated in the resolutions that this board has approved, all right? So, that is a long-winded way of saying, here's a resolution. And the resolution asks for two things. One, it says, our, we're submitting to you a revitalization plan. And the plan says that instead of renovating what was to be the first block of renovation of, of redevelopment, which is renovate the senior building, we will knock that down, but we won't knock it down until we rebuild first across the street, uh, in what's called Block A, where we'll be redeveloping, uh, brand, two brand-new multifamily buildings. And where the residents that are currently living in the senior building will be able to move to that site. What we're saying also is that this plan allows us then to, where this former senior building was, to have now two new buildings in place where we could increase the number of affordable units that we'll be able to provide on this, uh, building, I mean, on this, uh, entire site. The second thing that we ask you for is that, uh, we want to re, uh, we want to amend the, uh, master development agreement that's in place. And we're saying in the resolutions that we want to come back to you in two months with a, uh, with a renegotiated master development agreement for your approval. We do this in a very short time period. It's that the residents of Greenleaf have been waiting since twenty thirteen, when Greenleaf were first discussed about the possibility of, of renovating their community. And we want, it's time is now. And Mr. Pettigrew said to us, I mean, come on, guys. Stop the talking. Let's get the plan and get the entitlement and start building, all right? So, we need to change around the conditions in the properties. We're asking you to, uh, support this revitalization plan that we've been able to negotiate. It's, uh, with our redevelopment partners. It's based on good fundamental economic deals and potential for us to be able to deliver these units as we had outlined in our plan and to give us the sixty days to negotiate a master development agreement with our developers that incorporates development principles, our principles on operating subsidy repositioning, as well as its tenant handbooks and rights, all right?
Questions? Committee members?
Um, I mean, maybe just a little bit about, um, I had a lot of questions and concerns, especially around how the re, the predevelopment is being structured. Um, and we spent a lot of time with the housing authority team convincing me that it was a, a good idea for, uh, be, you know, because it's inverted. It's not what I expect in a development deal. Um, and so it took a little while to get used to it. Um, I really appreciate the amount of time and engagement around the project as well. You gave us time to really digest, um, all of the changes that were happening and the opportunity to like make sure that it's informed by residents before it comes before the board was also something that was important to everybody around the table. And that was really good to be, to have that kind of synergy around the room and have everybody on the same page. So, I really appreciate the process leading up to this as well. I think as a board, we don't like it when we're, um, pressed to make decisions quickly, but want to feel like we're fully included in the deliberation processes as well. So, thank you for that effort.
Yeah, no, I was gonna say, I mean, I think one of the things that became clear to us is that the market conditions now are very different than they were then. So it required a, a real rethinking of the financing mechanism. Um, I'm just picking up on what the commissioners commented. One of the things that we were saying kind of in committee was, we're not comfortable bringing this to the board until we know that, we don't, we don't want to sort of go
public with it. We don't want residents to be surprised that they might hear about this in a board meeting. And, and I know, um, you guys have done a good job of engaging. Could you just speak to a little bit of?
Yes. We, uh, we did. Given that we discussed it in committee, right? And the commissioners, you were very adamant with us in making sure that we didn't, uh, catch the community off guard. On March twenty-six, uh, Keith, uh, sponsored a, uh, meeting with the resident council where the redevelopment plans have revitalized, uh, and then the revisions to revitalization plan were presented. And then again, on April second, after our committee meeting, in fact, we rushed that, or the committee meeting was a long meeting because we were going to a five PM meeting with the resident council, I mean, with the residents, as well as with the ANC, the two ANC commissioners, and they were invited to the meeting, so that everyone was there at the same time. We had our two development partners with us, uh, but it was presented, uh, the revitalization plan. We have about fifty people, uh, fifty residents in the, and, and a couple of ANC members in the audience, as well as twenty people online. So we did a hybrid. Took a lot of questions, spent almost two hours there having an engaged conversation. A great part about it is, you know, many times these meetings turn into discussions about maintenance issues. This meeting focused on the redevelopment issues. So what were the nitty-gritty kinds of issues? I mean, and what, what residents said, I, Mr. Pettigrew, I know it's early, but can we have this? Can we have that? Can we have that? And these were important things in the redevelopment where people were actually thinking about their community. And we're saying, our residents, our partners, we better start making sure is that we're there con- constantly in conversation and that we're incorporating the things that we're going forward.
Yeah, some of the things, normal stuff, they want rooftop deck. That's all they're gonna get. You want it, senior building to have ramps in the front end and the back, which makes sense. Um, and it also asks about bedroom sizes, um, in terms of the square foot. And so the partners were there. I said, you hear what people want, you gotta deliver what they want. And the fact we ran back so many units, I think, I think we should be able to accommodate. And I want the residents there the whole way. I told them, I said, listen, there are going to be days I may need you guys to lock arms with me and, and walk, and help me get through this entitlement process. And the more that you guys show up, the better it's going to be for us to be able to put agenda through as quick as possible, and I'm waiting a long time.
We'll need more density on the site than currently.
It happened on this Commissioner Blackson, my hand is up. Um, I just wanted to share, um, I had the opportunity to attend both meetings on March twenty-six with the resident leaders um, of Greenleaf and also the April the second Greenleaf revitalization plan meeting. And I want to say that the residents, um, were well engaged. They did have a lot of requests, as Director Pettigrew stated. And I'm not an ANC commissioner at Greenleaf. I am the DC Housing Authority Commissioner that was in attendance, um, also at the meeting. I know he announced the ANC's was there, but I was there in person as well. Um, some of the requests were for a larger bedroom size, larger unit size. They had a lot of, um, viable concerns about amenities and things like that, but it seemed well received from my end when I was there, um, and also in engaging with the residents afterwards. They were very excited, you know, and just wanted a timeline of when this project would be complete.
Yeah.
Build it tomorrow, right?
Yeah, hard to blame us.
Any additional questions or comments regarding Resolution twenty-five dash ten?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, pause. Commissioner Jenny Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Teresa Silla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronnie Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Jim Dickerson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Denise Blackson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Chris Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you. And Chairwoman, um, Melissa Lee, sorry.
Yes.
Perfect. Your resolution's approved.
And now Commissioner time.
Oh, all right. Um, I did have one question, and maybe this is a question for Director Shaw. Um, you know, one of the numbers that, that I'm always looking closely at is, um, what I, what I think of as sort of vouchers on the street, where people are looking to, to match those vouchers up with units. And I, I think in the, in the, the now, the data, I think it's called new vouchers searching, if I follow that correctly. So, I mean, I think on the one hand, it was sort of good news. It looked like that number dropping, which, and again, like all numbers, but there are a lot of different inputs that go into that. Um, and so I sort of thought, well, that's good. I guess one of the questions I had was, there's also the, the, the row two, I think, two or three below, where it talks about vouchers expire, which I think unfortunately is a sad case where somebody has a voucher and they run out of time before they conclude it. So, I guess I'm just curious, um, Anton, any, I know this is the, sort of an issue that you're very focused on. Uh, I'm just wondering if you have any thoughts to share any updates for us on how we can make sure that once people have those vouchers, they're able to find units that they can use them on?
That's a very good question. This, this Anton Shaw for the record, Director of the House of Choice Voucher Program. So that's the issue we've been dealing with since I've been here, and prior to me being here, and housing authorities deal with across the country in terms of getting families to lease up. Here at DC Housing, we're still continuing to, uh, conduct our meeting lease events. And this weekend past, we had one where we were actually over capacity at the, at the church. So we had to have people outside, yes, um, meeting landlords. We had landlords outside. We had seventy landlords to show up, which was great. Unfortunately, the, the site was not large enough, so we're looking for a new location. But the biggest challenge we face with families leasing up is choice. Um, families are very, and they have a right to be, uh, choosy. Um, families want what they want. DC is an apartment-based, um, city. Houses are very, very hard to find, and families want that. And because they lease up so quickly, most of the families are waiting. And as they wait longer and longer, that hundred and eighty days expire. They get to that point where they expire. So we're, we have been stressing the families. I've been stressing to my advocates to speak with their families, to have their families to lease up quickly. Um, it's better to lease up now for, uh, in an apartment for one year, and then look, uh, once their lease expires for, for a house. So some families listen to what I say and listen to the advocates, and some don't. And unfortunately, the vouchers expire. That's what you see in the report. But the goal is we're going to continue with our meeting lease events. We have a year of events planned out. So the, the, the issue again is still choice.
Yes. So it's, it's not a simple story that someone might want to say is they got a voucher and they can't find a place.
No, we can.
It may happen to some people, but it's, it's driven by other inputs as well, like people waiting and.
Oh, yes. We have apartments around DC that are available. Families just have that cha- that choice that they want.
Yeah.
And we, we just can't find the verbiage, the quote, to, to motivate them to just take an apartment, let's go to a house.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And also, Commissioner Murphy, just so you know, we, we brought our locators, five, six, uh, uh, we just, we had three, brought our initial three to help, uh, reach out to voucher holders that are, has that ninety-eight period to assist them to find out what the challenges are and try to inform them of where in the city they can find units. And I get calls all the time from landlords saying, hey, I got units. And I'll tell Anton, listen, hey, I got a landlord says he has several units and make it, you know, give the locators, that's, that's, people know that, that they have another option, you know? So we really are trying to find other ways to, to match, to get people to find places where they want to live.
Great. Yeah, thank you.
Uh, do we have, excuse me, do we have, uh, an idea of, uh, hi- what's our vacancy ra- I mean, how many units are ready to be leased now, uh, that are vacant? Yeah, I think that's what I'm trying to say.
Oh, Jim, I was asking about voucher program.
Okay, okay.
Public housing units, these are people with vouchers matching up those units to privately owned apartments in most cases.
Okay.
Commissioner Dickinson, we're doing, um, Commissioner time. Would you like to share any thoughts or comments or questions?
Uh, no, I, I just asked you a question.
Anyone else? Um, any other commissioners that are remote today? Commissioner Blackson, Reed, Harris?
Yes, this Commissioner Blackson. I would just say that a lot of, um, HCBP clients reach out to me, um, trying to find units and just waiting for the rent reasonableness to come through. And Mr. Shaw is really good with getting back to me. I, I mean, I have a lot of requests and he's able to accommodate me and make sure that the clients are getting the response that they're looking for.
And I'll just add, uh, Commissioner Blackson. So our locators also, so if you have anyone that is looking for rent reasonables in advance, just reach out to Anton. He can connect them with the locators because they're running rent reasonableness in advance of people applying to a system in there.
Okay, thanks. That's great to know.
Commissioner Silla? Um, I wanted to flag that I've been getting, um, some calls, um, from constituents with less experience who are losing their way through the voucher process, oftentimes because they lack cell phones and don't have the ability to communicate or coordinate. Um, I, I am always redirecting people to the Ombuds Person, uh, Wayne Waller. Um, so I just wanted to flag that there are those kinds of requests and complaints that are arising and that I'm sending in that direction as well. So I know our constituents can be very difficult to get a hold of. Um, and so, uh, I think even providing clarity around the release of information and paperwork that's needed, that might be a way in which I can support, um, ears and outreach workers, make sure that they stay in the loop as well.
Hey, just for the record, Mr. Wall is picking up two more staff members because of the volume.
Yes, and I was so glad to see that he had additional support when he came to the ICH full council meeting. Very delighted to hear that he will be getting additional support. They've been, he's been invaluable to our system.
And we, we do have a release form. If you have caseworkers or, you know, or others who are looking to, yeah, right. Did you, so if you need those grants or something like that, we can.
Please.
Get those to you. So they're ready.
Yes, and I can just. Yes, and I can just forward that alongside Mr. Wall's information. And I just have like one toolkit that I can send people. That would be fantastic. I appreciate that.
This is Commissioner Harris. I have a quick question. It's been a while since, um, I think I brought this up way back. The automated, automation of the application for those folks, I know a lot of the residents we're speaking of and the applicants have already done their application. But has, have we gotten that totally automated? And that the paper packets and gotten rid of the pa- paper packets being mailed, dropped off, or emailed?
The application, it's online, but they can fill in.
It is still filling PDF.
It, it's writ- it's writable? That's what I'm asking. It's writable with like a submission?
Let, let us circle back with you. I know that there's an application online and you should be, it's, it's fillable. Yeah, it's definitely fillable. But online submission, um, not that yet, not online submission of application.
Okay, so that, has that been a topic at all about doing? Because I say all this to say, you know, if we go back to some of the folks saying that the back and forth, um, not too much lately with the initial application submission, which is kind of good. But I'm just wondering, are we going into that direction for those that are computer savvy, um, to be able to do so? Was that just something that's on the back burner?
Yeah, so the answer, Commissioner Harris, is we are going in that direction. We haven't been moving as fast as I'd like to, and the staff will tell you that, uh, uh, first, the, the gasket about it. Uh, with, with the team, because it's taken longer than it should be. So, we are headed in that direction. I've been given, uh, a, 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 a deliverable date of June. And so I'm holding my IT folks as well as staff to that deadline. Uh, because we do need, we should have been there by now. We're not. And, and let me just say so, uh, but, but I did address it.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, this is Jim Dickerson again. I'm going to need to leave, uh, for an emergency here. And I appreciate it. I want to say, I'm very impressed and I'm very grateful for the staff and the board and the efforts that I see and that I participate in, in this, uh, in our endeavor here, our calling and our mission here. And it's, uh, I, I really, I really want to give you all a lot of, uh, a lot of thanks. And I want to give God thanks for you. So, I, I'm very happy to be a part of it, and I, I appreciate everything that's going on, even though we've got a lot of work in front of us. So I I'm very happy to be a part of it and I appreciate everything that's going on, even though we've got a lot of work in front of us. So thank you so much, and I I need to drop off.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Commissioner Dickinson. I think we are all good for today. The next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Wednesday, May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five at one P M via Zoom. And information regarding viewing or participating in the meeting live can be found at W W W dot D C housing dot org. We are adjourned and the time is two fifty-two P M.
Thank you.
Thank you.